We'll get some more Facebook retorts. This is good.
Don't get into that on TV.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, I want to open the planning board meeting of 12:15, 2015, at 7:50 PM.
So motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is open. Okay, first up is, we're going to do SD, SD off SD way, SD way? Okay.
I'm the only one here.
I think we're just continuing from a few weeks ago. Taylor, give an update on where we are in terms of the back and forth between him and Peter Williams. If you have any comments.
For your records, I promised you an updated hydrology report.
Yep.
Also, just in case you don't have it, here's a list of the waiver requests. Basically, from the last meeting, there were very, a few minor changes. Most of those calculations, catch basin calculations, a few hydrology calculations to verify. The infiltration basin did not change in size. We added a little bit of a berm to bring up the freeboard elevation separation from water to the top of berm. Couple of details were modified slightly, a grant bound detail added. We added grip wraps to a detail that was shown in the plan, they're not showing in the detail. Just little minor things like that. And at this point, I don't want to speak for Peter, but by reading his most recent letter, I believe we've addressed all the comments from him.
Is that the same one that you sent us in the email a few days ago?
Yes, dated December 9th.
Yeah, downloading, getting a copy.
Yeah, we got it right here.
Every comment is identified as resolved. There is one, one comment number nine that indicates a recommendation of a potential condition of approval.
Which would be the NPDS permit, which is something we require federally to file 21 days prior to construction.
Peter, did you get a copy of the waivers?
No, I don't think we got a full copy of the waivers.
Yeah, I can get you one. It's the same, it's taken right off the cover sheet, literally. Word, identical.
I should get it.
Yeah, they work.
Soon as we hear from Peter on these, then we'll vote each one individually.
Oh.
Or should we?
I thought we already have.
Did we vote on the waivers?
Informally.
No, no, but I mean, I thought, oh, you did, did you open Peter's email?
Yes.
From Jim, I mean.
So, Peter, have you seen the waiver request?
I've got the full request.
Not on paper.
All right, you want this copy?
Waivers were included as part of the plan set.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing new on the plan, it's just those, okay.
Literally those copied off the plan set, pasted into a document.
Yeah.
And so there was a reference to the waivers back in the GZA's November 23rd letter. There's an acknowledgement in the December 9th letter that our November 23rd, 2015, resolved comment items, and those pending a waiver approval had been removed from the comment. So the December 9th letter from GZA, and I don't want to speak for Peter, but doesn't reference any comments that necessitate a waiver, but there was an indication, and we had gone through this at the last meeting, in the November 23rd letter, that certain of the comments were pending action by the board on the waiver. So the very first one from the nickel says, "Ten of Groveland Rules and Regulations requires a scale of one inch equals forty feet is used for all plans, a waiver has been requested, status pending issuance of a waiver." So they were all addressed back in November.
Right, now it comes back to me, Walter was, Walter was against the changing the scale. I remember that, yeah.
And just to clarify too, per the last meeting, the request for waiver lighting was removed.
Good, because I think you do need a street light up there.
Yeah, we actually spoke to Groveland Light, they're going to coordinate. We show some lights on the plan, but they're going to coordinate with us.
Yeah.
And make sure the cooks are satisfied with rotations.
Good.
Yeah, and they could shield it too. They could put shields so that it doesn't go on their house.
If you're familiar with, they're going to be very, they're going to be just like what you have in Estes Way, and they're not those big.
Actually, it'll be on the other side, too.
Yeah.
They don't even, that's right, it's going to be on the other side. But they could use a low density.
Yeah, we had talked previously about dark sky compliant lights that are directed downward, so there's not unnecessary spillage onto adjacent property, so that's what. And if the roads he's fit to include a condition to that effect were, were not.
Listen to them public?
Well. All right, Peter, in your mind, all of these on a December 9th, you're okay with?
Yes, basically, I'd riddled them down from the prior comment letters, and I took off the dissolved ones from the prior comment letter, and then I had submitted a comment letter back to them, and then he made some revisions to the plan that were submitted to me, and that addressed those fine comments. Basically, we've gone through all the minutia and, you know, bringing up all the details of the plan.
Okay. But you want more time to go through the waivers yourself?
Well, I think mostly, a lot of these are just, you know, practical, basically, the size of the plan and how this, and other features that are.
Okay, but we really got to read those in, right?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll, we, you know, if you give that back, those, we'll read them all in, and then we'll vote on them then. And if you have a comment to any one of them as we're reading them.
Do an extra copy, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, which one?
The waiver list.
I don't.
Oh, I can run a copy.
Let's run a couple copies.
Okay.
Some people in the audience, watching, have been talking.
Okay. Why don't you make?
Three at least.
At least three, you know. Not more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take one. And then Peter.
Here we are. Probably want the copies.
Yep. Okay, you ready to go on this, or? You want to read them over all yourself? I'll take one at a time.
Yeah.
Read them aloud. Okay, we're going to discuss the waiver request. The first one, section 3.3.2. Requirement that plan sheets be at a scale of one inch equals forty feet, or such other scale as the planning board may accept. The scale of each sheet varies in order to adequately show the entirety of locust property within sheet. One at 1,000 scale, and sheets two and four being at a 50 scale. The remaining sheets in the plan set are at a 40 scale. We ask that the planning board determine the three sheets not at a 40 scale to be acceptable per section 3.3.2. So I'm asking, you know, the variance on section 3.3.2 by the planning board.
Just a point of order. Taylor, on the first sheet, that's just the overhaul plan, which I like, you can see the whole thing. And then the sheet two and three at 50%, what are those two sheets?
I believe one of them is a lot layout. Shows.
All eight houses, yeah.
What was the other sheet number?
Over the two and three, wasn't it?
Four would be.
Two and four.
Oh, two and four.
Yeah, that's the second sheet, existing conditions.
Four is lot layout. And the second sheet would be existing conditions.
Yeah.
Lot layout would be the fourth sheet.
Yeah.
And I just want to add that last sentence in that section of the first back to it. As I believe it's worded in the regulation, that it's, all sheets shall be one inch equals forty or otherwise acceptable as deemed by the planning board.
Yeah. No, I see no problem with it myself.
I think lot layout's the fifth sheet, isn't it?
Yes, it is the fifth sheet. I got to detail it.
Make a motion, we grant that waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next waiver is 3.3.2.2. Waiver from the requirement that the title block run along the entire right-hand edge of each sheet. The title block runs along the bottom of each sheet. However, all required information is contained within the title block. So it's just relocating the title block.
Motion to approve that section?
Yeah, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Section 3.4.18. Waiver from the requirement that all existing trees with trunks over 12 inches in diameter, measured four feet off the ground, be shown on the plans. A majority of the locust parcel is wooded, and the limit of woods on site has been shown on the plan. If any trees are observed during the site walk with the planning board that, in the opinion of the board, should be shown on the plan, said trees can be flagged and field located for plotting on the plan set.
All right, so when you're up there, the roadway naturally has to be cleared with the, on each side, a little wide in the road, and also the house lots. There might be some major trees out of those areas that should be flagged, but.
There can still be, I mean, obviously, our tech was looking at on the sidewalk with that.
Yeah, well, I got in there finally a little bit, okay, and.
We'd be more than happy to walk the site.
I couldn't see the forest for the trees. So it was pretty dense in there at that point.
Before, construction will lay out all the cell fans.
Yeah.
So you'll know what the proposed limits of clearing are.
Yeah.
And if there's anything in there that you see that we should try and say we can work with that.
And we also have the tree buffer area that we added, which will protect the number of trees.
Yeah.
That'll have to be staked out first thing during construction also.
Yeah, I remember, right, I used to go up there to get wood rough cut by Ralph many years ago. It was quite wooded out back there. Make a motion, we accept that waiver?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, section 3.4. Point two, point 22. Waiver from strict compliance with the traffic memorandum. A traffic memorandum has been submitted analyzing the impact of the proposed development on traffic in the area. Given the small nature of the subdivision, no vehicle counts or travel speed measurements have been collected.
I believe we did a traffic count for off, not off, but SD way when we did it, and it was not noticeable.
Yeah, and we submitted the additional traffic that will be created to it, as well as site distance measures, things like that.
Make a motion, accept that, grant that waiver?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A waiver from the requirement that Massachusetts State Plane Coordinate System datum NAD 83 be used. The coordinate and bearing system is based on record information of record for Estes Way, shown on Plan Book 350, Plan 37.
You want to just explain that bearing system?
Yeah, basically, in the pre, you know, probably in the early 2000s, a typical bearing system used for state plane courses was NAD 27. Sometimes surveyors use bearing systems for record plans. Nowadays, with most surveyors, when there's nothing else there, they use what's called North American Datum of 1983. However, the previous plans by Christian and Sergey were prepared on North American Datum of 1927. So rather than cause confusion by having two separate plans showing different bearing systems, we just chose to use the original bearing system from the original subdivision.
So there were no pins off of the SD way, and that you could get your bearings?
We relocated all this place and shown on our plan. And like I said, when you look at one of our lines and look at one of their lines, you'll have the same bearing distance versus having a different bearing. Just to let it.
But I think the reason for this, and there's a lot of towns and cities, you know, going through GIS systems, and NAD 83 is the basis for the GIS systems, so to try to, you know, trying to update as you go along. I wonder if the town is moving forward with GIS.
Yes, we are, yeah.
When we get to that point, we'd be happy. For example, Salisbury, we submit it on whatever bearing system we want. Part of the requirement of our middle is, no matter what our plan shows, we provide them an electronic file on NAD 83.
That's what's going to suggest if they can help the town with, you know, especially with the asphalt and the fire and blockways, provide that one.
Right, we made a supplement in our subdivision rules that that's required, and we give it to Debbie Webster, yes.
Not a problem. In fact, we use GPS for establishing town line and stuff, so we have two drawings, one on NAD 83, one on this, so very simple.
Make a motion, we grant that waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Section 4.3.10.6. Waiver from the requirement that a vegetation plan be prepared by a landscape architect. The re- revegetation plan, the revegetation plan has been prepared by a civil engineer.
That civil engineer has qualifications to do?
Yes, that, I mean, in my opinion, yes, but that has to do with the 10-foot cut. The only area that's required in is anywhere where there's an excess of a 10-foot cut. And we submitted an erosion control plan, which demonstrate how to properly seed it, things like that, check dam, things to. Things like that.
And you're. Compared with that, I think civil engineers have erosion control specialties. How would you evaluate them?
Yeah. Is he going to be designing the bio detention ponds and retention ponds?
He's a landscape architect?
Yeah.
No, we do not have one involved in this one.
Okay. Are you up to speed on the new bio detention ponds? All right. Yep, so you're all right with it, Peter?
Yes.
All right, motion to grant that waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, section 4.3.11.5. Waiver from the requirement that cobbles be installed along the inner diameter of the cul-de-sac turnaround. That is shown in detail A. The waiver is requested for long-term. Maintenance issues and snow removal complications.
There's one.
For discussions with the town of Groveland Public Works Department. The applicant intends to petition the town to accept the proposed roadway as a public way. The cul-de-sac's design will adequately accommodate turning movements by any size vehicle that enters the roadway. We seem to be, you know, waiving this one on every subdivision, so it's probably something that to take out eventually.
The highway commissioner has voiced his opinion, I'll let him, he's against cobblestones, and I am too, so.
Yeah, they're not practical.
With the landscape, right? Cul-de-sac?
They're not practical, they're very slippery, and they're hard to plow. So, make a motion to grant the waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Same, since I didn't know what the vote was.
All right, basically, we're just to not use cobblestones around.
So we're still going to landscape it?
Yeah.
I'm a bear.
Okay. Okay, the vote's unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah. Section 4.3.10.4 and section 4.3.8.7. Waiver from the requirement that a level landing area of 2% for 75 feet be provided at the intersection with Estes Way. The proposed design provides a 2% slope for the first 25 feet of the new roadway. The average slope provided over the first 75 feet is 2.5%. The waiver is requested to reduce the depth of cut into existing ground.
All right, why don't you elaborate on that, Taylor?
Basically, what we're running into is we start to come into a 10%, 12% slope. So we have the 2% slope for the first 25 feet, and then we start into a vertical curve. That's where the slope gradually increases, that's why it's still only 2.5% over that distance. But if we were to extend the 2% out of full 75, it would, the vertical curve would either, it would either require a larger waiver on the vertical curve, which is a more dangerous situation, in my opinion. Or we would have to cut much deeper.
Okay, this has been previously discussed, but Peter, do you have comments?
I think in most cases, when you're concerned with the leveling slope, is when you have a roadway coming down into an intersection. This is going to be an opposite situation where they're just, you know, they're coming off, and then they're going to drop down. And when they're coming out of the subdivision, they're actually going up the grade. If they have just a little, you know, they have some time to rest, and then start up the next hill. So I think it basically meets the intent with the 2.5% across the whole area.
Okay.
All right, make a motion, accept that, grant that waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, 4.3.8.9. Waiver from requirement that property line radii be 25 feet at right-of-way intersections. The westerly right-of-way intersection with Estes Way has no rounding due to conflict with the abutting property line. Design features and construction of the proposed roadway is not impacted by the reduction in the right-of-way curve radius. No other waiver requests are required due to the reduced radius.
One question, Taylor, if they have a delivery truck, or a trash truck or something, when they go out and turn, they're not going to be going off the road onto the lawn?
No, in fact, the road design itself meets all your regulations regarding to radii things. This is just in the paper right away.
Yeah, I know it, I got caught on that last, it's just the paper.
I tried to clear.
Okay. Make a motion, we grant that waiver?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Section 4.3.11.11. Waiver from the requirement that the cul-de-sac length shall not exceed 750 feet in length when the portion of Estes Way connecting to Uptack Road is included in the cul-de-sac length calculation. The cul-de-sac length of the new roadway is 745 feet. However, when Estes Way is added to the cul-de-sac length calculation, it increases by approximately 700 feet for a total length of 1,445 feet. When Estes Way is included, a waiver request is necessitated.
Can we go into discussion on that for a second?
Yes.
Taylor, that's, that's starting from.
Uptack.
From Uptack all the way down, cut that. The fire chief sign off on this?
We've, we have given copies of the plan, we've called him, we've stopped by to try and speak with him, and have gotten no response.
Okay.
So I assume he has no issue with that.
All right, he's usually pretty good at responding. Okay, is there a back way in, just in case, through that back east, man, is there?
No.
Trail road, lumberyard, what about through the, the street behind it?
We have no rights to that.
Okay, well, I understand that, but is there, is there an access? Could you get a vehicle through there?
No.
Four-wheel drive?
Mostly it's wet one.
Mostly wet one?
Block or river.
So. As one member, I have no objection to the waiver request, I understand why it's there, but I think we just got to get a note from the fire chief, because he's the only one for emergency access vehicles. That would be, because that's what we do with the other ones, we have the emergency fire roads, or another way in, if a tree falls down, can they go in? I'm sure there'd be no issue, but it's just a cross and a T's, dot and a I's. So you could grant the waiver with the.
Right, with a condition?
Yeah.
So motion?
If I could make a clarification to the motion, just because I caught what I think is a typo, I think the reference should be to section 4.3.11.1. I think there's an extra one.
One and a.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay, do we get a second on this?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're gonna have to hunt down the fire chief, that's all personally, and, you know, I, you know, maybe the
In the reg, he's got a line item in section four, I think it is. You know, what's required on the preliminary definitive plan. He has eleven items.
You've gotta see him about the water storage anyway, right?
We just wanted, yes, I mean, again, he's had ample time to review it. He's provided all these plans, but
He's new chief, as far as, yeah.
At the same time, it's George and I talked about this last week, that we do want to have a meeting with him, make sure that it's exactly what he wants.
Perfect. That sounds good.
Make sure the location selected is proper. As it is, we have a fire tank at the top of the street and the bottom, so.
Sounds like a, like a housekeeping item to figure out. Okay.
Section four point nine, point three. Per section four point nine, point three. Rules and regulations state the board may waive the sidewalk requirement entirely or require that they be constructed on only one side of the roadway. We ask that the board waive the sidewalk construction along parcel A to preserve more of the natural landscape as a buffer between the new roadway and the abutting homeowner.
Parcel is the one on the right?
That's the limited cut area, yes.
What's the length of that?
It's the entire, basically, we put the sidewalk up in front of the lotting.
And then it comes all the way around, hooks down the right side and goes all the way up to Uptack?
So the only place we can have sidewalk is through parcel A, essentially.
Okay, and then, but then, it does carry on up to Uptack, right?
It runs in front of every house and then all the way up to Estes Way and then it crosses over Estes Way.
Uptack, oh, okay, okay.
This is the existing sidewalk.
Yeah.
Motion to grant that waiver.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Anything else to be, come before us tonight relative to the subdivisions?
No, that's all.
Pete, Peter, you have anything?
No.
Does the board have anything else?
Right now?
He's just gonna
See if the
Taylor said you're gonna see the light.
We've already spoken with them.
Oh, you have?
And we will coordinate further as construction gets going on and figure out construction schedule and things like that.
Okay, is anybody in the audience, the abutters, have any, anything they wanna say? Okay. So
Turn the hearing?
Just We're not gonna close the hearing. We're gonna continue the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. The hearing's gonna be continued to what date?
Walter, have you got your schedule?
I don't, but let's pick one anyway.
Is it we're going to keep the hearing open until decisions are prepared? Is that the intention of the board?
Yeah, then we'll do the M O D and get the final plan and everything with everything on it and we'll get it going, that's all.
So if we show up with cost estimates last night, we can wrap it all up.
Yeah.
Viewed and Peter's gotta do it on that.
He's just gonna
Yeah, yeah.
All right, first Tuesday in January is, what, the fifth?
Yep.
And then it's
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth is the third Tuesday.
You get it done by the
You wanna get it done by the fifth?
Can you?
Holidays, two holidays.
Who's gonna write the M O D?
He's just gonna be putting it together mostly, so.
Yeah.
So, you wanna go to the third week?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay.
So what was that, nineteenth? Yeah. Those, those take a little bit to do, but we pretty much have all the dates now at this point. Okay.
Uh, thirteen, thirteenth or twelfth?
Nineteenth.
Oh.
January nineteenth. Yeah. We, we go the first and the third Tuesdays. I like to stick to that.
Seven forty-five again?
Yes.
Yes.
I left my phone up in the cockpit. Just double check to make sure I don't have to call for it.
Sure.
I have one hearing in January.
Okay. No, no problem. Let's put a pause.
Yeah, I'm good on the nineteenth.
Good.
Okay.
Make a motion. We continue it to January nineteenth, the Estes, of Estes Way hearing.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. It's unanimous. Okay, the hearings continue to one nineteen sixteen at seven forty-five P M.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Yep, Scott Green's in back there and
We got the plans. Scott, you wanna spread these plans out on the, right in front of us is good.
Are you focusing for the
Yes, they're right there.
Where do you want me to spread these out? Here?
Right in front of you is good.
Well, these are the, these are the original ones.
All right.
Oh, so what do we need to sign it for?
You've got the Mylar, right?
These are all Mylars.
And then he changed the house number from eight thirty
Eight seventy or something?
Yeah, eight seventy-four to eight seventy, and then there were some minor changes.
But if they're the same Mylars?
Well, did everything get on them that was missing?
Yeah.
Or Scott?
Yeah.
They're on those?
They're on the new ones.
Well, these are the new ones.
Some of the sheets didn't need to be changed. They were
Right.
Okay, so the question is, how many sheets did you change?
I think you changed privacy.
That don't have signatures?
What's that? These don't have signatures. Everything else does.
Well, the Mylars is always signed, so.
Yeah, well, we got different dates.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with a ten, what is it, twenty?
Ten
Yeah, that's, that's within the ninety days. That's fine.
Yeah.
A letter, you know, some, the only thing that we do is a recertification letter. Did you re-stamp them or anything? Do you have the M O D? Just
I, I brought that with me.
Yeah.
Right, that was okay. All the changes were on the M O D.
Right. No, I mean for the recording date. Did, did Ann, what'd she give you for?
She gave me the original stuff. Originally, she gave me
What's the timestamp?
Is that in there?
Right, so is there a timestamp on it?
Do we leave that in there, Bob?
Yeah.
Right, so, so what, Ann can go back in, re-stamp, re, yeah, re-stamp that. And then those will be fine, because those are within ninety days on the plans. So unless there's a new sheet with no signatures, we're fine.
Right, but that doesn't, that doesn't activate the twenty-one day appeal, because we've already done that.
Right, but the registry may want a current stamp if it was, if it was in October. But it still should be fine. Let me pause the
He's getting the copy I downloaded.
That must have made its way in here because it's not
Excuse me.
Oh, I thought you wanted Alan's response. That was in there. Because Alan listed sheet four or five and the
Sheet's number is, this is two eleven. Two eleven, I'll get rid of this one.
Oh, is this a copy or is this the original?
That's, that's a copy. He, you, did you bring the M O D that was timestamped?
Yeah, I have everything in my bag. Do you want me to grab that?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's just a copy that Alan
Yeah, I don't think we have to endorse anything. I just have to bring the sheet.
Make a, can we make a copy of that? Because
Yes.
Because it's got her stamp on it. We never got anything back. That was
How many did they submit? Did you submit three? Three M O Ds to the clerk? There should have been three copies, one
She had them pinned in back of one another. Now they're missing. So it's better to make a copy of this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the time, she only timestamped the one that was behind the copies.
So she didn't do all three?
No.
Because one goes to us, one goes to him, one goes to the registry.
From now on, she's gonna do three because she found out the same thing with his own.
It should look like this underneath.
And have her timestamp three of them.
Yeah.
We're gonna start that policy.
We already did.
She hasn't been, but now she's going to.
Yeah, that's not us. That's, that's her. That's why we always submitted three, three of everything, three A and Rs, three copies.
More copies, yeah. I would
This is the original.
That's the original. That's what gets filed.
So we'll need at least probably three.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm a little confused why you're rolling out the Mylars if they're, all of them are endorsed.
These aren't. These are the
Oh, those are the new sheets.
With the changes to match the M O D.
Everything's gonna match up.
Yeah. He was missing three things.
Okay, so there's three new sheets we get to sign.
Well
No, more than three.
More.
Now, we should put the original date on these things.
Right, to match them up.
To match it up.
Yeah. Unless the date women, what's the stamp on the sheet? Are they all the same date?
Well, that's, that's what I think we should do.
Yeah, just, we'll just read, do us the same date.
Well, wait, wait. What's the date of that?
Date on the original.
Ten twenty fifteen.
Okay, what's the date on the new Mylar?
There is no date, right?
Should be.
Because you have to sign.
No, 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 the data, the data copy. It should be in the, should be an engineer date. Plan as prepared of
Nine thirty fourteen.
Fourteen?
Does that match this?
That's the original plan date, but that can't be the approval date.
Nine thirty fifteen. It's dated at nine. No, these are the old ones.
Right.
Right, this is old, this is new.
Twelve, twelve thirteen fifteen.
All right, that's good. Okay. So that, that's good. Okay. So if, if that's the case, on twelve, yeah, you can't put twelve, ten thirty-one on it. You gotta put today's date, because
We don't have to put it back in there, do we?
No. No, the memorandum is a separate
Within the ninety days.
Yeah.
So these are all, just keep this totally separate from that.
Okay.
You'll put that out in the vehicle. I don't wanna see it.
All right, so we can start signing now, right?
Yeah. Jim, I put the tape on. Pause. How many sheets we got? How many pages you got, Scott?
It's like eleven. I think it's eleven pages.
Yeah, I'm up to six.
Okay.
What we know we'll do, we'll just start them again.
You got that table there, too?
Put it over that table, too?
Yeah, just walk them down. How many pens we got?
Two.
Two. Yeah. Just, usually we just expose them to the block.
There's only one under each one, right?
One signature block?
Yeah.
You can date it, too. It's gonna be today's date, isn't it?
Yeah, today's date.
Today's date.
Yes. Because that's the date the, the new ones were presented, so. Guys are done with a pen, I'll circle through. Signing party. A signing party. I drove down Homestead. I took a look at it. I, I drove down, take a look at it. So, it is, you know, it's up against the back there and I see what you mean, on the left-hand side.
Next thing we wanted to
I drove down the street to look.
Yeah.
The cul-de-sac to see where everything was and the foundations, and I saw the left side that you were talking about, behind. Yeah. That's what I walked down to take a look. So I wanna hear what's We're gonna watch it anyway, but I wanna hear what you got. On it, for sure. But Yeah, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some moisture. We've just gotta figure out where it's going and what the plan is. So, we'll take a look at that, but it's, you really can't tell Yeah.
They make the copies down there, right, the six?
Yeah, yeah, six cert, six certified, not one copy, six.
M O D copies, Mylar copies.
Right, so you're gonna have a left from the checkbook. So, and then get, get the certified copies of the M O D. Okay, you roll one and one in each other.
All right.
Okay, and you can drop them in the office here if you want. We'll, we'll distribute them for you.
All right.
Get one, make sure you do get one to the clerk and one
So all
Oh, and your, your Three CDs.
He is the original.
Yeah.
That's the original. That, that's for the registry, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, three CDs of the plan.
Okay.
Now
He has the, John has the CDs on these, right?
Yeah, he's, all he's gonna do is put the, put that plan on three. Bobby gets one, Mary McValley gets one, and the assessor's office gets one. That's where those go.
Double check to make sure we didn't miss any signatures.
Okay, I mean, start on my end.
Putting them all together. Walter's gotta sign and Bobby, yeah.
We only have two pens.
Well, you got one, okay.
Yep. Bobby has one there.
This the MOD?
Yeah, those are the other two copies. And Scott, you've got the cover letter that Ann wrote saying no one appealed it, right?
Yeah, that goes with the. You know, we make this pretty seamless. You know, there's three copies and you go stamp, stamp, stamp. You get one, register gets one. Okay. And we get one, and then that's, that's it. And then, and then off you go to the registry. Record all this stuff.
So he wants, do you want more copies of that?
No, we got, no, he just needs the master copy, which is.
We've got three copies.
Right, oh, you have, okay, perfect. Oh, so what's this?
No, he just made copies.
So you don't have the certified memorandum then? You do, where is it?
He has the MODs in here.
No, no, I mean, the, the registry stamped.
They told, I went there, they're like, you need the original.
He had a copy.
They gave me a copy at the office.
Wait, wait. Right, so you went to the registry with the original. So where's the original? That's black ink, where's the blue ink?
He didn't have an original when he went there. He only had a copy, that's all she had left.
So what'd she do with the original?
She gave me the original.
It was under.
Under.
It was under it.
Alright, I missed some. You have one blue copy. And two black copies of ink, say Towne Grovel. The blue copy's the original. That she time stamps, gives back to you, you give it to the registry.
That has the timestamp on it.
Okay, all three have timestamps.
He didn't bring the appeal.
Not the appeal, the memorandum.
He didn't bring the original.
Original, they kicked it back, she found it, so she gave it to me.
So he didn't bring the one with her stamp on it and stuff, right?
Okay.
She made a copy of it.
Yeah.
Did the registry give you the boiler point that they said they were going through?
Yeah, I got all the points. You wanna make a copy for yourself?
And we wanna give Ann one too.
Okay.
Is that, Bobby, just check that, is, it's all original?
See this, see this Towne Grovel planning board? Okay, that's, the original's blue ink, not black. So where's the blue ink copy of the original decision? The letterhead is in blue ink.
I have some now, we didn't have any. We were making copies of everything. But that's coming from her.
Alright, so, um, just so we're clear, okay? Very simple. Okay, when we produce these, only one has blue ink. Obviously, this isn't it, nor that, nor that. Where did the blue ink copy original go?
We didn't have one, Walter, and she just timestamped to stop the twenty-one day.
This is the office of the town clerk, we don't have this. She has this.
Well, this is decision made by the planning board.
Yes, she creates that.
See.
What the hell's the difference between the blue ink and the black ink?
Tells you which one's the original.
As long as it's timestamped, the original one was timestamped.
No, it tells you which one is timestamped, that's the thing.
When you look at the stamp, you'll see that that one is not a photocopy.
Even when I deal with like the S D O T, they want, they don't want copies.
Right.
They want blue ink.
Blue ink, that's what I'm trying to tell you. We've always done these on blue ink for twenty-something years. We've done them on blue ink, this one's on black. Okay? Alright, so.
Did he, did he make a mention of it down there?
It's, it's another thing that we were going to have to tell her at this point. Because, I mean, you know, we're, we're almost doing her work.
This actually came from the registry, what they want for the filings.
Yep. Bob, can we get you to make more copies of this?
Okay. You know, none of this has changed in twenty plus, thirty years.
That's what the registry gave a boiler point showing.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
Okay, because you're not, you're not understanding what's been going on.
No, no.
I'll tell you that right now.
That's, that's for sure, obviously. Cause I used to deliver all three copies and it's stamped, so, okay. Alright, so we're all set with him? You wanna move on to Homestead and?
That's not on the agenda.
Okay, so what's, what's the plan?
Who, what are you here for?
Well, we were told it'd be something at eight thirty tonight about Homestead Lane.
Who told you that?
Did we have, who did you have?
All I told you is the days we were meeting. And I never called you back to put you on the agenda because we were advised not to.
By who? I missed that one.
Denise, we're not supposed to be doing this. Would they, you're, you're the one that filed with the Attorney General? Okay, you gotta go back to the Attorney General's office at this point. There were two, two ways to go on that. Okay? Alright, that's been done. We haven't received anything from the Attorney General.
I can't answer for them.
Well, we can't do anything until we do.
So what was the?
You can't discuss anything about Homestead Lane until?
No, it said they would get involved. Where are they?
No idea, I can't answer for them.
Then, you know, at this point, you're gonna have to get in touch with them. That's all I can tell you. There were two ways to go, you had to pick one of those. Okay? So I don't, I don't know what you've done with them.
Yeah, I get this tool.
Okay, so I'll put it in the box.
And we wanna give Ann one.
Anything about Homestead Lane?
I was told by the town manager this morning, no, nothing. I, I had heard that you had talked to two people. And, you know, for this, because the Attorney General's stated in that letter, you had to choose one of those two ways to go. And they would get involved with us.
Yes.
Okay?
So where did you sign?
Nothing's been decided.
Open meeting stuff from back then, that has nothing to do with what's going on now. So if we're gonna, I mean, what are we gonna do here? Are we gonna, are we gonna keep, are we gonna keep going with this?
Well, we don't know what, we don't know what, we don't know what you have filed. He did not give us any indication. He just simply sent us a letter.
He was reading stuff back from two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Yes, I, I put that in a package to you.
Okay, yeah, and they, they're dealing, I don't know what they're doing.
Okay. So that was.
You have to go back and get in touch with them.
The foundation's gonna be put in now. Now, you guys are gonna refuse to discuss any of this?
Right, you're not on the agenda for that, and we can't discuss that.
Let me, number one, yes, you're not on the agenda, so we can't really do it. But to give you a heads up, okay, I was told by the town manager, okay, that we can't be talking to you at this point. Because the Attorney General has not come back to us and told us what you're doing.
I just told you what's going on. And I think you know what's going on because you received the same thing I did.
Did you choose one of those two things in that letter?
Which are the two things you're referring to?
Basically, the first thing was said, go get an attorney. That's, that's the gist of it. The second thing is that the Attorney General's office would get in touch with us and yourselves and sit down and go over what your complaint is. We don't really know what your complaint is.
What the last, I heard from them was, and I haven't heard anything since. So, but this has nothing to do with the open meeting stuff. Now, if we're gonna play games and.
No, 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 what is it, what is it to do with?
We're playing games.
What is it to do with?
This has got to do with the water situation, with the, with the foundations that we're playing.
Now, weren't they supposed to come back?
So you're, you're telling me that, that the letter that came back from the Attorney General's office, okay, you're not, you're not playing with that at all? Cause that was, that was on the open meeting law?
That was on the open meeting.
Okay, so nothing's happening?
Okay, they have it, they said they're looking into it. I don't know what they're doing.
I, at this point.
Well, we're playing foolish games.
No, it's not a foolish game.
It is foolish.
It's illegal.
This is not what we're talking about right now.
It's a legal precedent at this point.
Okay. So if we're gonna play games, we wanna do it that way, that's fine, okay? We're talking about the water situation with the grades and the foundations and everything else. It's got nothing to do with the open meeting stuff. Okay? So if we're gonna do this this way, that's fine. Let's get it out, hopefully this is being recorded and.
It's on TV right now.
Yeah. So we're playing games.
No, we're not playing games. It, it's, it's the action you took relative to the board's decision, okay? Relative to open meeting law.
Right.
Okay? Now you're telling me, well, is it squared away? Is it finished? I don't know. We just got a letter back saying they would do something once you made a choice.
Right.
Did you make a choice?
We asked them to look into it.
You asked them to do it.
And that's the last I heard of it.
And we have not received anything from them.
Right.
Relative to that, so we can't go forward on it.
Why don't we make, when we hear from them, then we'll put them on the agenda.
Okay, but wait a minute.
Alright.
Can I, just a protocol. I understand the whole stuff about, and I wasn't briefed by Denise about, you know, the, the whole open meeting law. I get that. Okay, so, but we have other residents with a subdivision going live on stuff. I, I would just like to hear, if it's not about any of that stuff, that's a separate issue. The foundations, I know, did go in, we did approve two cellar holes to go through. No building permits were issued. They do have to come back in for that, okay? And the locations where the zoning, zoning enforcement and building inspector were present.
They all picked it out, it was all in the plan, but.
They were out there on the side.
If we wanna talk about that, then the next meeting's the nineteenth.
Okay.
And if that's what we're gonna talk about, I'd say talk on the nineteenth, not tonight.
Okay.
And then, if it's the earlier subject, we have to wait until we hear from the Attorney General.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I believe it is the cellar holes that we're talking about. But I, I, just to update the board, you, you guys were here when we asked the building inspector, for the record, we asked him if he was on their location about the, about the.
I was there the day he was there looking where they were putting their stuff.
So they were put in in the proper location, they met all the setbacks. And the subdivision decision still holds as far as anything that is required. But he does have to, there were no building permits issued, just, just foundations at this point.
No occupancy permits issued.
So that's gotta come back.
I'm talking about the grade.
Right. And the final grade isn't anywhere near, that which we know. And, and the whole water issue is gonna be, we left that wide open for any improvements necessary if it needed to be going on. So I'm waiting for some rain, actually.
Well, we're not gonna be allowed to talk about.
No, the nineteenth.
Not tonight.
That's the state law, that's not here. If it's not, unfortunately, the way that they put it now, if, if a discussion point is not on the board, we're tied too, then we can't discuss it. We used to have an open meeting posting and we used to just put board discussion stuff and the, the AG came back and said, we have to be very specific now, what's discussed in the meeting. So, so that is true. Has nothing to do with you or just everybody else.
So I assume you knew we were coming tonight?
I didn't make out the agenda, so, and that has to be posted within so many days. So that was a burp on the board's part, okay?
Well, number one, I mean, I wanted, and I heard you had two members. And that letter says to me, wait till the AG contacts us. They haven't.
Okay, that's on a separate issue. He's got, he's got a grade issue. And the other residents did too. You know, they all had the same issue about what's gonna happen with the water back there and the trees and the, and all that.
The two others would have liked to have been here tonight, but couldn't.
Yeah. So let's, let's put them on the agenda for the, for the nineteenth, for the foundations and water.
Well, I, I am gonna pass this past Denise.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, literally at this point where I was told no.
Okay.
This morning.
And, and, what's the other party's last name?
The, the other two residents?
Yeah.
Kataris and Bob.
Okay, so put their names down for the, for the nineteenth.
The hearing for SD is at quarter of eight. That will last to at least quarter past eight or eight thirty, if you're on time, so.
So put it on eight thirty. Eight thirty. So that'll take care of that issue, cause we do wanna hear it. I've, I've been out there myself, I drove it. I didn't walk it, but I drove it for ten minutes. I got out, looked around, the whole thing, the vehicle drove up and down.
From the back of twenty-five and twenty-seven.
I saw the, I saw exactly where you were talking about.
And it was just from where they posed off the cement truck, what blew through.
Well, I'm waiting for a nice rain.
Yeah, I'm waiting, yeah, us two.
Well, no, I mean, to, to fix it. If there's an issue, that's what we do. I mean, Bob and I are always out in rainstorms checking, checking gutter line profiles, everything. That's, that's when we catch all this stuff, cause when the sun's out, it, you can't see it.
I've got more I'd like to discuss about it that might be helpful, but if you guys don't wanna talk about it.
Well, we can't on, on that thing. So the nineteenth?
Okay.
And you can tell the residents that didn't come in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll be right out. There's just something I need to say. I look at the board here, okay? I am a resident of Grovel, okay? I own a home. I've owned a home for almost fifteen years. Everyone in the neighborhood has been there more than twenty, thirty years. Those are homes in that neighborhood, okay? In the time that we've been there, we must have put in millions paid to this town in taxes, okay? I sit there quietly because when I open my mouth, nobody listens to me up here. I have to talk over everybody, okay? This is more of a personal note. I look up here, why are you here? You're here for us. You're here, your job is to protect us. Why do we have to fight?
You can come in and talk to us, but you file a legal action against us.
I don't talk, talk now, I'm not talking about all that.
No, 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 I'm telling you, once, once you file a legal action against us, you're filing against the Towne Grovel.
I don't, I'm not talking about that right now.
Okay?
I'm not talking about that right now. I'm talking about, you have failed the community. You have failed our community.
I don't feel that way.
I don't feel that way at all.
So when I come back here, a year, maybe six months from now, my basement's flooded. My neighbor's house washed away. What are you gonna do? The builders are gone, they're long gone. I'm telling you that right now. They're long gone, they've paid their dues, and you're gonna look at me and go, I don't know what. They got all their permits, that's all I have to say.
A lot more went into that than you know, and you never showed up. That was why.
Why we never showed up? We showed up two thousand and seven. And two thousand and eight.
The record shows that.
We were here. We didn't know about the other ones. That's all I have to say, you have failed us.
Is.
Can't agree with any of that whatsoever at all.
Well, we have surety that goes into place and we haven't not corrected a problem in a subdivision and not that I've seen in almost twenty-five years, so. So we'll, we'll address it.
Well. Is four forty-one coming in, Bob?
No, no. That's the landscaper, SD, they weren't on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna read that into the record, that we received four forty-one Main Street's landscape plan.
Right.
Gonna read all this in.
Okay.
We signed the MyLars for Sunset Circle on twelve fifteen fifteen. This is a new set of MyLars. Um, some Homestead Lane residents showed up without being on the agenda, the questioning water on their property and the grades on, on the, uh, property of Homestead Lane.
Modify that to anticipated water, there's no water problem now.
Anticipated water, okay? Um, four forty-one Main Street landscape plans were received by the board. Alright. Anything else tonight?
No.
Nope.
Everybody have a good Christmas.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion to, uh...
Motion adjourned.
Second.
At nine o'clock.
Yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn at nine o'clock. We'll handle the motion, Eric Killian, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're adjourned.
Okay, thanks for watching. Hey, Trey.
I'll give Ann the, uh, copy of the boiler point of everything she needs.